Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Litchfield Planning Board meeting for March 6, 2018. If you all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, which the flag has changed, so switch directions.
Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, it appears that we do have a quorum, one, two, three, four, five people. Actually, Dennis, would you like to be in? I know that you haven't been sworn in yet as a full member, but that's going to happen. But for tonight's meeting, be appointed as an alternate to fill the position.
Yes.
Voting member. Voting member position.
Yes.
So, okay, very good. Thank you. All right. We'll have the roll call of members present. Michael Croto, Chair.
Chair of the Land Sheet, Clerk.
Tyler Perrin, Member.
Kimberly Queen, and Vice Chair.
Dennis Page, Alternate.
Okay. And we're going to start off tonight with public input. Is there any members of the public who wish to speak for the planning board this evening? Hearing none, I will close public input and we will go on to the business at hand. This evening, we have two things. Well, we have, they're one, but there's two parts to it. We have, first, the acceptance of a lot line adjustment and site plan application. The applicant this evening, SNL Project LLC, owner of the property, Colby Litchfield LLC. Lot line adjustment, which would be taking approximately three acres from tax map 22, Lot 96, and adding the acreage to 496 Charles Bancroft Highway, tax map 20, Lot 21. There was also a site plan application this evening to create a 36,160 square foot building in the Northern Commercial District at 496 Charles Bancroft Highway, tax map 20, Lot 21, for office space and warehouse for an automotive parts distribution facility. This application includes a request for a sign at the site. I see that the applicant is present this evening. Would the applicant please introduce himself to the board?
Great, thank you very much. My name is Brian Pratt. I'm with CLD Fossett O'Neil.
Thank you, sir, and welcome this evening. The first order, how we're going to do this this evening, we do have the issue of the lot line adjustment. We will address that, and then we will address the site plan. First, we want to make sure, we have to make sure that everything that has been submitted for review of the plan is in place for the applic- and I mean the application process. So, in order to do that, we have to do a motion for acceptance of the review application for this particular site. Seeing I have the application here, I see that most of the stuff appears to be here. Jen, everything is in order. I assume we have all fees paid.
Joan's got, talk to Joan about fees.
Well, I'm sorry, Joan.
I got checklist.
All right, well, put Joan on the spot. Joan, all fees and escrow's been paid?
Yes.
For this project? And I assume that we have all the seals and signatures for the applicant in terms of his plans and so forth submitted?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Jen, do you, we have everything that we need?
We are good on the checklist.
We are good on the checklist, very good. So, at this time, saying that we are good on the checklist, does the members of the board have any questions? Okay. Since we're good on the checklist, I think what we need to do is make a, well, someone has to make a motion to accept the application for acceptance. So moved. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, is the discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. One, two, three, four, five, zero, zero. Okay, that part's done. This is a rather large project, and I think what we're going to do, because we need to, I think we need to be a little bit organized here, I think we'll start with the applicant basically telling us a little bit about what this project is about. Then what I would like to do is we'd like to talk about, first, the lot line adjustment, and then after we've done that, we'll proceed into details about the site plan, if that's okay with you.
Sure.
Okay, very good. So, why don't you tell us a little bit about this project and what it is that you're proposing?
Great. Again, for the record, Brian Pratt from CLD Fossett O'Neil. Also with me today is Mike Frichette. He's the architect, so he can answer architectural questions if they arise. So, the reason that we're here is for the property at 476 Charles Bancroft Highway. I have up on the screen, highlighted and read, the approximate property lines. This building next to it, that's New England Small Tube. This is Mel's Funway down here. This is their haunted hayride. Down here is Colby Road, which is across from, you know, kind of loops around Charles Bancroft Highway, and then in the back is the Merrimack River. We were here about a year ago with a similar project to this. It was for a construction company that wanted to site their headquarters here. Because of the cost of some offsite improvements, to get utilities to the property, that project couldn't move forward. It was just out of their budget. So, I was approached by its SNL Projects. They're proposing a warehousing and distribution facility for auto and RV parts. So, this is kind of an overview of that. Again, this is New England Small Tube off to the side here. The haunted hayride is off to the left. The Merrimack River is up bounded on the north, and then Charles Bancroft Highway is down here on the south. The lot is kind of a flag lot, so the real buildable portion of the lot sits in the back. That's in this, you know, this kind of farmland area behind New England Small Tube between the river. So, what we're proposing is a 36,000 square foot facility. Like I said, it's for auto parts and RV parts distribution. Access to the site will be off the Charles Bancroft Highway. There's an existing driveway curb cut that's located about right here where I'm showing, but it's actually off the property. The applicant attempted to get an easement or to purchase this triangle of land, but that, butter didn't want to sell. So, what we're ended up doing is we're shifting that proposed driveway over about 40 feet from where that existing curb cut is, and me, Jen, and Joan stopped out there earlier. I put a stake in the ground if you wanted to stop by and check out where that driveway is. It's a stake with some pink flagging. When we originally submitted, we had a 24-foot wide driveway that came down and submitted and entered the site. It's an 80-space parking lot for employees and for kind of their delivery trucks. And then in the back, this is their loading area. So, the way that it works is they get about 20 tractor-trailers a day that are coming from everywhere in the country, just delivering their, you know, their bulk parts. They store them in the warehouse, and then they distribute these locally to smaller auto body shops, parts stores, et cetera. So, the tractor-trailers come in, unload, and then they leave. They come in sporadically throughout the day, so they're not all just arriving in the morning or in the afternoon there. Some of them come, you know, they come spread out throughout the day. The delivery drivers, you know, generally leave in the morning with, you know, they fill up their trucks, and they leave between 7:00 and 9:00. They make their deliveries, and then they come back sometime between, you know, 1:00 and 4:00 p.m., and then, you know, the employees leave. The facility is going to be a 24-hour operation, but it's most of the traffic in and out, most of the trucks, everything will be during kind of working hours. But, you know, because these deliveries are coming from all over the country, if somebody gets stuck in traffic, you know, they show up when they show up and they unload, and so there's this kind of a skeleton crew, I believe, for employees that work overnight, restocking and unloading. Let's see. We got dumpsters located in this area here. This driveway is an at-grade loading door, so they can back trucks, you know, lower trucks right up to it. The rest of these in the back are all four-foot loading docks, so. Actually have a kind of a rendering showing kind of what that building looks like. So, this is the front. This is that office area, which is, this area right here is where the main entrance is to the offices. That's that. And then down in the back, that's that at-grade loading door. The dumpsters are, sit lower behind this truck parked here, and then you can see all those, those are the four-foot loading docks, and those are all along that back wall here. Water, there's no public water to the site right now. There's a, there's a four-inch water main that ends kind of in front of New England Small Tube, and there's a 12-inch water main that ends at the intersection of Colby and the Charles Bancroft Highway. So, they are going to extend the 12-inch water main all the way to get fire protection to the building and for their domestic water. Sewage, there's no public sewer here, so it'll be taken care of by a septic system. We have a septic tank here that comes out onto the parking lot, comes across, and then there's a small leach field. The septic flows here are really small. You know, 500 gallons per day, give or take, so it's a small enviroseptic leach field. So, the stormwater for the driveway, basically, right now, this is Colby Brook, which is the small brook that comes out from under Charles Bancroft Highway, and that's our western property line, and it runs all the way down to the Merrimack River. So, the stormwater in this area is treated by a vegetated filter strip, so the runoff from the driveway sheets toward Colby Brook, and then it's treated by the existing wooded area there. Stormwater for the parking area and the roof flows to a sediment for bay right here, which takes out any sand or particles, anything that's kind of stuck in that stormwater, and then that overflows into an infiltration basin right here. All the area in the back flows down to another infiltration basin here, same thing as sediment for bay, and infiltration basin right there. The ponds, these two ponds have been sized so that even in a 100-year storm, there's nothing overflowing. Everything will infiltrate back into the ground there. Natural gas, there'll be, I'm sorry, propane, there'll be a potential pad right here for some propane. Electric, electric is a little trickier. They have to do an offsite improvement, and they have to run poles down Charles Bancroft Sorry, I lost it.
It's okay.
Here it is. So, where Colby Road meets on the western side, the existing poles run down and around Colby. They don't run along Charles Bancroft Highway, so we worked with Eversource, and they asked us to run poles up to our driveway entrance. From the driveway entrance, they'll run underground to a transformer on the site, and then that'll feed back to the building. Going back to the driveway entrance, like I said, it was originally submitted as 24 feet, but that required that the trucks turning into the site cross the center line, kind of swung wide. So, we got some comments from the police, from planning and engineering, and we've actually addressed, we've revised that a bit. So, what we did is we widened that driveway out. So, the driveway now is 30 feet wide through the first 100 or so feet of it, and that allows trucks to turn into the site and out of the site without crossing the center line, so it's safer. The only drawback there is that now we're a little bit closer to Colby Brook, so there's a 50-foot required buffer. We encroach into that by about seven, seven feet, so we have about 42 feet of buffer instead of the 50 that's required. We will be going to the zoning board next Wednesday for a wetland and a wetland buffer This is the other reason that we're going to the zoning board, is there's a small wetland impact, so. This is, this driveway is in the location of the existing farm road. What we're doing is we're just kind of widening it in place. We're shifting it away from the abutter a little bit, but the, so we have some wetland buffer impacts, which is highlighted in red, and then the actual wetland impacts are the cyan color there. It's really small. It's only, it's only like 285 square feet of wetland impact, so we will be submitting that to the DES Wetlands Bureau. It's a minor expedited impact, so it shouldn't be a big deal. We actually had it conditionally approved before, but got some technicalities that didn't get it, we didn't finish it up because of the, the old project didn't finish. So, we also have a little bit of wetland buffer here, wetland buffer impact here. These buffer impacts are from the man-made streams, though, because there's a culvert that comes out from New England Small Tube, and there's this little kind of ditch, so we're only impacting it there. Again, here, we're staying out of the 50-foot buffer to Colby. This is only the buffer impacts for the actual farm ditch, because there's a farm ditch on that property line there. The lot line adjustment, sorry, you mentioned that you wanted to talk about that first. I apologize.
Well, no, that's okay. I, yeah, well, what I want to do is, can you tell us a little bit, what is the, what is the reason that you're seeking a lot line adjustment?
Sure.
Explain that to us.
Yeah, sure. So, the buildable portion of this land, so Colby Brook kind of runs along this western property line, and there's, you know, there's a little pond here, and there's some wetlands, and then there's some steep slopes, and then there's the Merrimack River. So, you want to stay away from the Merrimack River as much as possible. The shoreline protection is 250 feet, and we're staying as far away from that as possible. After you take out, you know, your setbacks to the Merrimack River, your wetland setbacks, all that, it really turns this nine-acre lot into a much smaller, smaller lot, so. I'll show you the kind of the existing conditions, which might. So, this line right here is the 250-foot. This is the 150-foot setback. This is Colby Brook, which you have your wetland, your 50-foot wetland buffer of that, and then you have an existing kind of man-made. It's an old cow pond, I believe. So, that leaves you with kind of this, you know, relatively small triangle of land. This dash line is the existing lot line. So, in order to fit, you know, the building, the parking, loading, all that stuff, we needed to take three acres, so that, this kind of triangle trapezoid shape is that three acres, and that's, that's kind of corresponds to this little red area, so really just needed it to get a little bit more buildable area.
Are, in terms of the properties themselves, are there mortgages on those properties?
I don't believe there are.
Okay. Do you, have you checked with the registry of deeds or anything to determine that?
Do you know?
I'm sorry?
There's no mortgages on these properties, right?
No.
Okay. Another question. And are all the property taxes on those properties been paid and are there current?
Yes.
Okay. Good, thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Want me to go through the permits?
Before we do that?
Sure.
I kind of want to, like I said, I know this is a very new project, so I just want to kind of do this.
Sure.
Organized way.
Yeah.
As, well, first, I should open up the board. Does the board have any questions for the applicant at this point?
Any questions? Do you think you'll, we'll be able to see the building from the highway?
No. The property sits down about 20 feet lower than Charles Bancroft Highway, so we are at elevation. Sorry.
You probably won't even know it's back there, huh?
No. Yeah, it's, our finished floor is, let's see, 139. And we're at about 156 at the street, so. So, you see, you know, you've got New England Small Tube, which sits up, well, they're kind of down a little bit, but you have this, this whole wooded area is going to remain the same, and those trees are mature, you know, 30 feet tall or so. Our building is fairly tall. It's 48, 45, 48 feet, give or take, but I don't think it'll be visible behind those trees with the six, you know, sitting 16, 20 feet down below. The Merrimack River Committee, I met with them last week, and they were concerned if the building was going to be visible from the river itself, if somebody was, say, in the river, and did a little cross-section, direct to show. So, this is the center of the river here, it's station zero, and then our building is, you know, 450 feet or so away from the river. And if you look down here, so see, the river is down at elevation 96 or so, and our building, you know, sits up at, at, you know, 134, whatever, 133.
Tree cover.
And, yeah, we have these trees that are mature trees. They're, you know, 40-ish, 45 feet, mature, a mix of mature trees. So, just drawing a straight line from the river, straight over, you won't, you won't be able to see it. Maybe in the winter, you know, through the perfect spot, you might kind of get a glimpse of it, but it shouldn't be visible at all.
And my understanding is that you went to the zoning board and they granted you a variance as to the height?
Correct.
Of the building?
Yeah, we got a height variance and a use variance.
Okay.
Because technically, this is an industrial use in the Northern Commercial Zone. The previous applicant was a construction company, but they did have like kind of a retail showroom, so that actually was allowed in the Northern Commercial without a variance, and their height was smaller.
And I take it, I mean, it seems as though, from reading the decision from the zoning board, that it would not be necessarily visible. You wouldn't necessarily see it.
Exactly.
From Charles Bancroft.
Exactly.
But there is, to maintain a substantial portion of that as wooded.
Yep. Yeah, we'll have, you know, we'll have good woods all through Colby Brook. You know, there'll be that 50-foot buffer on, on our side, and then the Mel's Funway they have there, you know, there's pretty good stand of buffer through there. So, again, maybe in the winter, maybe you might be able to see it through like the perfect spot, but I don't expect it to be very visible. The reason for the height, you know, I think it's 35 feet is what the height is in the Northern Commercial, but that's more geared towards kind of retail, where this property is, is like a flag lot, so it's actually 700 feet back from Charles Bancroft Highway, so it's really not suited for a retail-type use, you know, and that's why the retail users would be smaller. Heights of up to, I believe, 56 feet are allowed in the town, so the fire department can access, you know, they're allowed, they have the ladder trucks and everything. So, I think the height difference was just because this is supposed to be more for commercial development, but it really does fit in with, you know, New England Small Tube, and then all kind of the users, there's some warehouse uses and whatnot right across the way, so it really does fit in in the neighborhood. Like I said, because it sits way back, it's really kind of the ideal user. Relatively low traffic, you know, it's 20 employees plus the tractor-trailers, so it's really not a burden on, on the highway system. We did a traffic study, which we provided, and, you know, it was really just the, kind of the turning in and out that was kind of an issue, and we've, we've made those changes, and we're going to work with Lou and everyone to make sure that they're okay with those. But I have the...
Jen, do you have any issues with the lot, in terms of the lot line adjustment? Anything that you want to add? Okay. In terms of the lot line adjustment, I don't want to go into the entire site. We're going to do that in a moment. But in terms of just the lot line adjustment issue, does the board have any more questions? Okay. At this time, what I'm going to do, I'm going to open this up to public hearing on the lot line adjustment issue first. I will open it up later as to the site review, but right now, in terms of the lot line adjustment, are there any members of the public that wish to speak? Or have questions for the applicant? All right. Hearing none, I'm going to close public input on this particular issue. Joan, do we have any, does the applicant, I should ask the applicant, I'm sorry.
No problem.
The, what I asked you about the mortgages and the amount of taxes paid, is there any documentation that you have that you could present to the board or anything that would show that information? But we, if we vote on it tonight, we can do it one of two ways. If you want to, you know, wait and present that information at a later date certain, or what you can do, we can do a conditional approval if we decide to vote on this this evening, and that would mean just to have something in paper, you know, something in writing to show that this information, I think it's part of the due diligence process, and I think it would be just, so that we have it on record and that there isn't any dispute of that information, if that's okay with the applicant.
Do you think you'd be able to furnish something?
Just a letter.
Even just a letter?
I think, yeah, because most...
Yeah, I mean, even if it's something, we just need something to verify or to, in writing, that's...
Somebody that says, yeah, there's, there are no mortgages and...
Right, and that all the taxes are current and have been paid.
Sure. Yeah, the landowner is in the back, so.
Okay, that's fine. If there's no more questions from the board, I would entertain a motion at this time to approve, and this only applies to the lot, the lot line adjustment issue, to approve the merger, which is set forth under RSA 67439A, Section 2, for map, I believe it's map 20, Lot 21, and map 22, Lot 96.
If I might suggest that that be subject to the standard conditions that, if I get my cheat sheet, your checkbox items, plan copies, professional seal signatures, original MYLR for recording at the registry, electronic submission, and all fees paid would be the applicable standard conditions of approval associated with the lot line adjustment.
Okay, thank you, Jen. There's no other discussion, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the, wait, wait, I need the cheat sheet, the things that we have to have.
I do have... Approved.
I was wrong on my motion.
Yeah, no, go ahead, yeah.
Go ahead.
Number nine, the lot line adjustment. There was a comment here, however, recommended holding to allow map for ZBA action on special exception.
Well, I mean, that's, I mean, that's at your...
I don't know if that's still applicable.
That, yeah, we're going to, well, they have to go before...
It's on the lot line, that's the only reason I bring it up.
Okay. Is this, well, I should ask, is this part of that, if they have to get a variance for the exception, is the lot line a part of that process?
It's not. I just didn't know if you didn't, didn't, technically, it's already there.
I'm going to defer and wait, but if it isn't...
The lot line adjustment right now, just get it, get it done.
Okay. That works. I just didn't know if you wanted to package it all together, wait, you know, wait for the ZBA in case, you know, anything crazy comes up.
Get this one out of the way, that way, we're only focused on the site plan after.
Okay. So, then you've got those four standard conditions, plus the submission of the written documentation of mortgage and taxes.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions? All right. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the lot line adjustment for this property.
I make a motion to approve the lot line adjustment for this property with the four standard conditions Jen listed, and the, sorry, I'm...
That's all right. The, you mean, the more, that, kind of the condition that all mortgages?
Yes. I would place it with all mortgages.
Have been, the notice has been given that money has been paid and...
Yes, that all taxes are current and the mortgages have been paid.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, to the discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. Motion passes five, I'm sorry, one, two, three, four, five, zero, zero. All right. Now, um, we can go to, uh, the site plan, review piece of this. You mentioned, uh, permits, why don't you give us right now, and why don't you talk about those? Okay, and, uh, where you are with that? And then, um, at that some point, we'll get into the, um, the waivers issues. Since you don't have the special exception yet from the zoning board, you're gonna have to wa, uh, get that. I don't think for purposes of tonight, we're necessarily gonna get into all of that. What I want to make sure is, is that the zoning board makes its decision first.
Yep.
Once they've approved it or whatever they do.
Yep.
Then it can come before us and then we can discuss it. Cause it's kind of still out there.
Yeah, definitely.
Uh, but we can discuss other things this evening, uh, the driveway, obviously, emergency access, those types of things, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Um, so I'll start with the, uh, DES wetlands permit. So, um, we need a DES wetlands permit just for one very small impact, two hundred and eighty-five square feet. And, um, what it is, is the existing farm road, there's a, you know, a dirt road that's ten, twelve feet wide. And there's an existing, I think it's a twelve-inch, uh, I think it's a twelve-inch culvert that goes under this farm ditch right here. We're widening the road to twenty-four feet, so we need to impact the wetlands there. We're also upgrading that to twenty-four inch, we're gonna embed it a little bit so that the critters can still pass through. That was based on the first review DES. We did submit this to Wetlands Bureau, we did get a conditional approval. It expired though because the, uh, like I said, the old applicant didn't, um, didn't proceed. Uh, we also had to shift the road over about ten feet from the last time that we submitted this. Um, the reason for that is, um, whenever you have wetlands impact within twenty feet of an abutting property line. You need to get the, the abutting landowner to sign a statement saying that they're okay with that impact. They, uh, they didn't, they didn't want to sign that, so. This road actually is bumped over about ten feet from where it used to be. And what that did is that pushed all the wetland impact to the other side, so. The existing culvert location entrance on the upslope side is the same location as it is now. And the road just, you know, we widened everything, pushed it out that way a little bit. You know, that pushed the impact a little bit, you know, the buffer impact a little bit closer to Colby Brook, but we pretty much still have the fifty feet there. Whenever you have a wetland and a buffer impact, in this town, as you mentioned, you have a ZBA special exception, we're on the board. Have the meeting with them next Wednesday. I hope that they have a quorum. We're, uh, working with Kevin to try to.
And I know you met with the Lower Merrimack River Local Advisor Committee.
I did.
And they, uh, made their, our comments.
Yep.
To the, yes, that's part of the, the, uh, the packet.
Yep. So we have, um.
The Conservation Commission, have you talked to them at all?
So we, we're supposed to meet with them Wednesday, but the meeting got canceled. So we did kind of meet with Joan, um, separately. It's very similar to what the, um, the road was, the impacts were last time. So, um. We are available if, uh, any other members want to meet, but I don't think their next meeting is till, is until the end of March, so.
So what can you tell us about the, um, access in terms of, specifically in terms of access, the driveway itself off of, uh?
Sure, so it'll need a DOT driveway permit, which we submitted, um, about a month ago. We are providing them with these amended plans that show the, the wider driveway originally, like I said, we submitted it was twenty-four feet wide, but. Trucks had to swing wide and cross the center line, so we widened this to thirty feet, so now the trucks can make it in. Um, we're gonna follow up with DOT to give them these new plans as well. That way trucks can get in and out, um, heading to and from the highway without, uh, without crossing the center line. Because of that, we actually had to expand, we had a little bit of buffer impact here. And a little bit of buffer impact here. What, this is, so we have a guardrail and then we have a steep slope. So, the reason we have a steep slope is because if we went with like a normal two-to-one or a three-to-one side slope, that would push the, the impact, you know, a lot closer to the wetlands, so. What we're gonna do here is a, um, reinforced riprap slope, it's a one-to-one slope, so it's steep. Big, you know, big riprap. We, um, we didn't, um, catch up with fish and game. They do not want any netting or any of that plastic matting because there's, um, the potential for some species to use this kind of corridor. So we wanted to keep, um, the impact as far away from, you know, the buffer impact as far away from Colby Brook as possible. And, um, they, uh, the critters get, you know, they get caught in that plastic netting, so that's why we, we had to go with riprap there. So the red is all the, the fifty-foot buffer impacts. So like I said, DOT driveway permit, we're gonna, um, catch up with them, hopefully they're okay with it, they, they did give us a conditional approval for the last time.
Is that, I know, I noticed in the application, there's a, um, that's a traffic study. That was done by DOT, was that from the last?
That's for this.
That's for this?
Yep.
And they had made recommendations, I believe.
Yeah, it's basically just that, um. You know, the street network can handle it, it's, uh, it's minimal. You know, it's pre, it's fairly minimal, uh, traffic volumes, so there's, uh, twenty-four trips in the, uh, weekday AM. And then, um. About forty-four trips in the PM peak. And these are, that's all really small volumes, so basically it's, you know, they have about twenty employees that show up. And then they kind of leave with the delivery trucks and then they come back and leave at the end. And then, like I said, there's about twenty tractor-trailers that show up, um, sporadically throughout the day.
Are these big rigs or?
Yeah, they're seventy, seventy-three footers, so those, those are the WB sixty-sevens. So, um, I can show. So this right here is a truck coming in from the highway side. And it can turn in, and now that this is wider, see, it doesn't have to cross the center line. Originally it had to swing wide to make it in, but, um, we widen this, which, you know, increased the buffer impacts a little bit, but it, uh. It made it safer for the, for the vehicles, so. We tried to avoid the buffer impacts, but it really wasn't, it wasn't possible. Um, we do show like a fire truck leaving the site, so if they're taking a right-hand turnout, they will have to swing wide, but. Like I said, the tractor-trailers will all be coming in from this side. And then what they'll be doing is this truck is leaving, taking a right turn, so they, they can leave, stay on their side of the road. They can leave and just, uh, get right onto their side of the road. Again, if a tractor-trailer or a fire truck is coming from the other direction, they can turn into the site, no problem. One thing that we did talk about, Jen, a little bit was this area here.
Right.
The question that came up was, you know, can trucks stay on their side of the road here without encroaching? They kind of need to use the whole lane here because it's a relatively tight turn, but because of the topography, the wetlands, the wetland buffers. And because of the relatively low traffic volumes that will be coming in and out of here. We don't think it's a big deal for them to use this whole strip, it's, you know, if somebody's coming the other way, they just have to kind of wait a second, a couple of seconds for the truck to, to pass. Or again, if the truck is coming and he sees somebody coming around the corner, he'll wait and let them pass and then he'll make his way in. So for, uh, stormwater. We need a alteration of train permit from Department of Environmental Services. That's whenever you have, um, a hundred thousand square feet of disturbance, land disturbance. Or if you have fifty thousand feet of, of square feet of land disturbance within the two hundred and fifty foot protected shoreline, so we do meet both of those. That has been submitted about, almost a month ago, so we expect comments in the next week or two. This is very similar to the previous plan that we had, the infiltration basins are about the same size, they're about the same area. Impervious area increased a little bit, so they did increase a little bit, but, um, everything else is pretty much the same, so I don't expect any major concerns from them. Shoreland, we need a permit from the DES, uh, Shoreland Bureau. Um, and that's for impacts within two hundred and fifty feet of the Merrimack River, so this bold line right here is the two hundred and fifty foot line. This next bold line is the hundred and fifty. Generally what they kind of regulate is heavily, they heavily regulate the fifty-foot buffer, which we're not touching at all. And they pretty heavily regulate the, between the fifty and the one fifty. We have, uh, almost no impact in that area, we have a little bit of tree cutting for the edge of the pond in this area, but. For the most part, we're leaving the hundred and fifty completely, uh, natural in its vegetated state. So, most of our impacts are between the one fifty and the two fifty, so it's, basically they just want to make sure that, um. You know, your stormwater is working, you're not gonna erode everything, so. By, um, providing an infiltration basin that infiltrates all of the stormwater for even a hundred-year storm, they're, um, they're gonna be happy with that. There's an existing trail. Kind of a, just a dirt path that kind of runs down the slope and runs down to the water. We're just, we're kind of leaving that, then, you know, the employees can. Go down there and have their line tr. DES septic, we'll need a, a permit from DES for the septic system. That can't be granted until all the other permits are granted, so we're gonna hold off on that. That only takes a couple of days and we do have a full septic design completed, so as soon as we get our DOT and shoreline permits, then we'll, we'll submit that as well. Yeah, we did meet with the Lower Merrimack Advisory Committee. They did have some questions, I think, um, you read it. Their. Their, you know, their major concerns were, um, salt application. The town, uh, requires that we use the Green Snow Pro certified contractors, which, uh, you know, regulates the amount of salt that they use, so that is a condition of the, on our plans. They questioned the master plan, which that's more of a planning issue. About, uh, using agricultural lands for redevelopment. They did ask about a, um, an easement for public access to the river. I'm happy to relay that, uh, request to them. I would just ask that, um, something be provided in writing if this board, um, wants that, that way I can relay it to the owners and, um. See how they feel about that. It's tough to, it's tough to grant public rights on a private piece of land, especially.
I mean, I think it's up to the, you know, obviously, to the owners and the people.
Yeah.
Benefited by the easement, so.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I mean, we have no.
Yeah.
But, uh, certainly, I mean, it'd be a wonderful thing if, if they could do it, but, again, that's, uh. It's all about purview.
Right. Then, um, they wanted us to, uh, add some requirements, so. As part of the alteration of train permit, there's a ongoing maintenance, inspection and maintenance manual that, um, these applicants have to use for the life of the project. And that's, um, basically what it is, is it's quarterly inspections, so suppose, you know, they're supposed to have their facility manager go out every, you know, every quarter, just inspect the ins. Infiltration basins, kind of inspect, make sure there's no erosion across the whole site. The catch basins, make sure that they're not full of sediment, and when those do start to accumulate sediment, they're supposed to have them sumped out. Generally, that's about once every year is when the, the plan requires that they have that done. It's really an education thing. And, um, DES is doing a really, a much better job now of educating, uh, facility managers that, um, they're supposed to do this kind of maintenance, so. The River Advisory Committee asked that we add to that maintenance plan, that they inspect it. Inspect the site after a large rainstorm event. Maybe three inches or so, uh, I have no problem with adding that, that's a good idea, it's, it should be something that facility owners should do. Anyway, cause, you know, you get three inches of rain, it's gonna cause havoc, so you want to get out there and fix everything as soon as you can, so. We have no, no concern with that, we're happy to do that.
Are you gonna be storing any other, like, materials, like, I don't know, I don't say hazardous materials or anything like that, or?
Nope, um, so it's all, uh, auto and RV parts associated with that, they do have some oils, like, you know, quartz. Some small, you know, gallon jugs, there's no, um, large, you know, there's no five hundred gallon drum, fifty gallon drums or five hundred gallon storage tanks. There's no above or underground storage tanks here, they're not doing any refueling on the site. So really the worst case is somebody punctures a, you know, a quart of oil. Or, you know, drops a three gallon bucket or something, but other than that, it's, uh, there's no, you know, large. They're not required to have a spill prevention plan because of the volumes are, uh, are below.
What about like the parking, um? In terms of, are you gonna have an impervious service, a pervious service, anything, what, just, how's that gonna?
It's just normal pavement. So. The way that, um, let me get to the. So, you know, there's been kind of, um. Some different thoughts as to pervious pavement and, um, mixed, you know, mixed opinions on it. We, in the winter, you know, it's tough with the plowing. Salt, sand, all that stuff, it's, there's real potential if it's not maintained for that stuff to clog. So, what we're doing here is, um, you know, just normal pavement and half of the parking lot is pitched to a deep sump catch basin right here. So that'll collect the sand and the sediment in a deep sump with a hood, and then that all flows out to the sediment four bay. The roofs, the roof stuff comes down and the overflow comes down over to that same sediment four bay. And then some of this just kind of overland flows and, and ends up right here, so. Really, this is kind of the inspection area, so if, uh, if people notice, you know, hopefully they'll be out there at least quarterly in every, every large storm. They'll notice if that's starting to fill up with sediment and they'll notice, you know, they'll get that cleaned out.
What about like snow removal and stuff like that for, um, during the wintertime?
Sure, yeah, we have adequate area around the perimeter for snow storage, we do have some snow storage areas located, but. You know, realistically, the plow drivers just will plow everything, you know, plow it straight across and you'll end up with a big snow pile right here. You know, you'll end up with snow storage in the landscaped areas and, you know, the, around the perimeter, they'll just plow it off to the side, so you'll end up with that kind of snowbank that wraps around the perimeter.
And the, um, what about the roof on the building, you know, to?
Yeah, it's all pitched to, uh, this side here, so. If it was pitched down to this side, uh, you'd get, you know, runoff going down in, in front of the loading docks. So everything is pitched this way, we have a stone infiltration drip edge right here, so everything runs off. And hits that stone edge, infiltrates, and then, um, comes down to the sketch basin and comes across.
Does any members of the Board of Mortgage or Chime have any questions for the applicant?
Do you have a question for access all around the buildings, fire, fire service need access all around the building, do they have access all around, or are you sprinkled, so they don't need it?
Uh, building is sprinkled and they're happy with the, um, so we have full access around this side and full access around the back. Um, we did catch up with the fire chief and, um, they, they are okay with that.
Okay.
Yep.
And is this open to the public at all, to, for public to go in and get parts?
Nope.
Is there any plan for public to ever go in and get parts that'll always be just distribution only?
Correct. Yep.
Jen, you've had a question?
Sure, I was just gonna, um, follow up on the stormwater, um, management plan, our stormwater maintenance plan that we, um, talked about. So we stopped, Joan and I stopped at the site to look at the driveway, um, with, with Ryan before tonight's meeting, just so we could better visualize it. If you have a, a moment to drive by, it's definitely worth doing, so. Um, one of the things that we talked about while we were there in the field was that, um, we like that it's a separate standalone document for the stormwater management plan. And that it should be on file with the, the site, uh, with the site plan application, uh, and, and maintained on file, and if there are any, uh, amendments. To that document, they should be submitted, um, and kept on file here. Couple of other things we talked about in reference to that, um, and, and kind of ties in with one of the waiver requests is. The driveway, the stormwater for the driveway is expected to flow off the driveway, kind of down the riprap. And then hit what is that, that vegetated buffer. Uh, and so that vegetated strip is what filters out some of your contaminants before it, uh, hits the stream. And so this is something that, you know, in speaking with Lou, he didn't have a concern about the fact that it was allowing this wa, the stormwater to sheet flow to the stream. Uh, it's kind of a beat the peak, uh, approach, the, the thought is to get rid of that stormwater before you've got your peak stormwater that's coming down the Merrimack River. So that you're not further exacerbating that, that peak stormwater flow, uh, in the river. So that's not a problem, but one of the things that we talked about is for that to succeed, uh, you, you, it's dependent upon that vegetated buffer, remaining vegetated. And so the concern was, could there be any die-off from, uh, salt treatment? And, you know, the one thing that we do have in that favor is, is applicant has already noted on the plans that they're gonna use Green Snow Pro. Which means you've got trained salt applicators who will hopefully not oversalt, um, the driveway, so that we're, you know, minimizing that potential salt impact. But, we want to have some assurances that that vegetated buffer is, it remains vegetated. minimizing that potential salt impact. But we want to have some assurances that that vegetated buffer is, it remains vegetated. So.
And I know that, um, I, I think it was in, um, the, um, traffic study, they talked about trimming, um, near the culvert area. Is that my understanding?
Yeah, so right in this area, um, you know, so our, our, this is that existing kind of gravel driveway. But the property line actually is like right in this corner. And the butter didn't want to sell. So what we have to do is we actually have to shift that driveway location over to about here. And you can't really see it, but there's this kind of a steep embankment coming down right through here. So when we put the driveway in, it kind of comes in at the angle and it kind of meets up with this gravel driveway, you know, 150 feet in. Um, so it kind of comes in at, you know, at an angle. Um, but what happens is that pushes you closer to the guardrail. And, you know, sight distance looking right, it, it should be fine. But, you know, you can see how the, you know, the, the shrubs and stuff are growing up over the guardrail here. That's, just trim that and just kind of limb, you know, this might need to be limbed, you know, every few years just to make sure that these, these trees aren't blocking sight distance. It, we were out there today and obviously it's the winter. So the, the leaves were down and the sight distance is fine. But, you know, you get a nice jungle growing in there and.
Now, the public, I mean, I think with the last project, my understanding was there was an issue with Eversource and the public utility.
Yep.
How is this different this time, I guess? And you may have mentioned it, but I know there's.
They can afford it.
Um, but, um, in terms of what this project, what is, what are they looking to, um, how is this different?
So, uh, the previous applicant, so the, the existing.
Cause they wanted to go in a certain way and the, they wouldn't grant them a, uh?
Yeah, so we, Eversource has, um, a, a cross-country power access to the back of New England Small Tube. So we were trying to connect to that existing easement and just come across to the building. So it would have been real short. It would have been just, you know, a couple hundred feet. Um, Eversource, because of the issues they've had with the ice storms and the winds and, um, they're really trying to get away from cross-country lines because it's extra maintenance and all that. So, um, what they're requiring is that we connect to, there's an existing pole somewhere, yeah, you can't really see it, but yeah, right there. So we're connecting, running, I think it's four poles. So starting here and coming down three or four poles. Um, and then our new driveway is going to be right here. So we'll go, you know, poles there and then we'll go underground in our driveway. And so it's about eight or 900 feet. And that, that was kind of the nail in the coffin for the previous applicant. They just couldn't afford the extra hundred and $150,000 to, to do that.
Um, the fire chief, I think in, I don't know if it was an email or a letter, mentioned something about sprinkler systems.
Yep.
Can you address that?
Um, I don't have it handy. Do you? I don't, uh, I think it was just that they should be designed.
Or they were recommending it, I think.
Yeah, we, they are, they are sprinkler in the building. We're extending a 12-inch water main.
Okay.
Um, so the, the water main will come in from the north side of Colby. We're going to run a 12-inch line down the side of the highway. It's not going to be in the pavement. It's going to be off, uh, off to the side. And then we're coming across the street and running the 12-inch line to the building. So they will have full, you know, automated, automatic fire sprinklers.
Something with the inspections, third-party inspection of that or something?
Yeah, monitored.
Somebody was going to inspect the fire alarm.
Okay.
Fire alarm system.
Yeah. Yeah, that's more of a, uh, fire protection engineer. When they submit the building permit application, they'll review those plans.
Yeah, I, I mean, I guess as it's a, as he's stipulating that those, those items be in place in exchange for his willingness to only have access to two sites, two sides of the, um, building, um, maybe a plan note that just simply says that the, there will be sprinkle, you know, sprinkle, there will be the sprinklers on there, you know, fire, the fire alarm system will be, uh, third-party monitored, certificate, et cetera, et cetera. That stipulation piece. Just so that it's on there to say that those things are provided. Then we can, you know, we've got our quid pro quo.
Yeah.
Do we know where the hydrants are on the, um, or are they, are they on the plan?
The river.
We checked them, so they've got to be somewhere.
I probably want to mention them in a note as well.
Yeah, I'll, um, I'll just, I'll make sure those are on the plane. Um, so we do have the architect here. Are there any architectural questions? Um, if there are, I can let him answer them and then he's got a long drive.
You want to speak, you know, briefly about the, the architectural design of the building or whatever, you know, what, what's unique about it? Is it something that's different from other buildings, I guess?
Okay, sure. Happy to do so. Um, you pull up the renderings of.
Yeah.
And your name, name for the record, I'm sorry.
Good evening. My name is Mike Farchett. Uh, I'm an architect at PDA Associates.
Thank you. Yes, and you can step forward.
Thank you. And so to your comment, uh, just now, there, there, the, the probably standout feature of this building is, is the height. It's, it's an extra tall, you know, in terms of, uh, uh, you know, typical warehouse, uh, um, design. The tenant uses a high bay racking storage system, uh, that requires a 40-foot clear dimension to the underside of the structure. And so the, uh, the building, which pitches down from the, the roof, which pitches down from a, a high point, uh, along the loading dock wall back to the, uh, um, the wall you see in the top. Do you mind if I stand?
Yeah, go ahead.
So the, the, on the high side, uh, the building is 45 feet out of the top of the roof above, um, average grade. Uh, and it edges down to this side, which is viewed from, uh, having the entrance perspective, to 42 foot six. And so it's higher than, you know, than what a typical warehouse might be. It helps, uh, the footprint of the building be a little more efficient. And is, uh, it's basically a function of how the, the proposed tenant services their, uh, their warehouse. There are some, the entire building is clad in corrugated metal panel, so vertical corrugations. And it's a typical, um, steel frame, open web joists and girders. So there, with the exception of, um, the office, I mean, the, the office entrance and some small window areas adjacent to the office, uh, the entire building is clad in this, uh, this metal skin. About 200, 2,000 square feet of the total building is, is dedicated to office and, um, sprinkler room, electric room.
Are there windows on the top? Is it, or is it just me?
This here?
This part? Yeah, what is that?
Uh, that's, that's just a, an accent.
Oh, okay.
So that's just a really power change really to kind of get, to bring the visual to the line down a little bit, uh, because of that, um, height issue.
Are there going to be any windows in this? It doesn't look like.
So, um, along, along this side, there are a few, um, eight-by-eight, uh, aluminum and glass, uh, windows. In the corner, the entrance is, uh, is, uh, eight feet on either side of the, the corner. Uh, sliding glass, glass entry store. Bathroom facilities for employees, um, cell data room, you know.
Is it going to be like, you enter the building, is it going to be offices in the front? Is the, is the warehouse going to be in the back?
Yep. So, uh, so kind of on the approach side with the parking lots here, uh, the entrance is right on the corner. And the office basically hugs this, this edge of the building. Um, you can kind of see, uh, from, you know, this same wall viewed from the opposite direction, uh, the entrance, um, the, uh, sprinkler room, uh, door and a, uh, an access door on the, the end there. And so it's sort of, uh, the, the office is kind of hugging that, uh, that edge and everything else is open warehouse.
I have the floor plan that I can show.
Uh, so the orange of the parking lot is over here. Uh, and the entrance is on the corner. There is a small break room, bathroom facilities, uh, gang of four offices, storage room, uh, sprinkler and electric rooms here. And the, uh, electric, uh, forklift charging bay, uh, is the base of the wall there. And then everything else is, is open, open storage with their, uh, tenants apply racking layout. The loading dock doors, there are 20 typical doors that have, um, uh, they're four feet above grade at this level. Uh, there's two dumpster bays, uh, next to those. And then a, uh, a door that, um, where the grade is ramped up to allow forklifts to drive in and out of the building. Um, just for, uh, more unusual deliveries if they don't have a, a dock type, uh, truck. Running dock seals on all the doors, uh, but there's no, there's no canopy or anything over these, uh, over these loading dock doors. Uh, it's a relatively straightforward layout.
Thank you very much. Uh, does the board have any questions?
Do you guys need a door anywhere in this back corner, an access door, some back, back here at all?
Yes, and, uh, you can see it, there's stairs in the end.
Yeah, I got this one here in this corner. Should there be anything back here for emergency?
So there's a 250-foot, uh, exit, access travel distance is required.
And with the sprinklers, you're good.
So yeah, our total overall dimension is, uh, 290 feet, uh, on the long, in the long direction. So by the two doors on this end and the one door on that end, you cover it.
Good deal.
The next question I have, Jen's going to smack me because I should have asked it at the start of this whole process. Is there any regional impact to this project?
Some, pardon us while we temporarily hit the pause button. Check off a procedural box.
Exactly. Um, usually I ask at the beginning of the, the hearing and that's usually the first question. As I was doing this, I was like, we didn't ask that question.
I may have sent you an email saying, um.
I know. I would have gotten a lot of, uh, emails. Um, is there any regional impact to this? So, um, do you see any regional impact to it or? I mean, it isn't, I mean, it's a, um, distributions or a place, it's a warehouse or, um, and you're going to have traffic. It's a business on motor parts and things of that nature. But I would imagine.
I mean, you've got traffic coming and going from the highway, but it's not a significant number of vehicles that are coming and going from the highway. As you think about that traffic, um, further north as it's approaching, uh, the Manchester city line, it's a blip on the radar in terms of, of what they have for traffic volumes. Um, so I would not, and I wouldn't necessarily consider it, um, of regional impact in that regard. Uh, the only thing that would make me like take pause to think about it is, I know we often, um, look at what happens across the river and perhaps take offense to the view that, uh, we are graced with, uh, on occasion with some developments across the river. Uh, and say, why didn't we get notified of that? Um, but where we've seen, um, that cross sec, the cross section, uh, and that the building is likely not going to be visible, um, at least from the river. And even with the tree cover, it's quite possible that it won't be visible from the other side of the river. I think, um, in that regard, we are okay. I do, I do understand and appreciate the comments from the lower Merrimack River Local Advisory Committee that's looking at ma, trying to maintain the river corridor in as natural of an environment as possible. So with all of that, I would say, no, I don't see that there is regional impact, um, that warrants notifying budding communities.
But 48 feet is almost a five-story building. Right, 48 feet in height, is that what it is?
Uh, yes.
Well, it's one, it's one story.
Right.
Is, what color is the building?
Uh, it's going to be some sort of, uh, neutral tone, probably a light gray.
Not like neon.
Right.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Electronic Rita board.
It's, I mean, it's, it's tall. And I mean, I guess the question would be, um, you know, across the river in Merrimack, when you're, you know, you're also at a, potentially at a similar grade, um, what are they going to, you know, what are they going to see looking back? Uh, and who lives across the river? Uh, residential?
Uh, yeah, it looks like there's residential here. Um, looks like they do have a little buffer. There's this little island here. Um, and then we do have 150-foot.
Right.
Um, you know, we're maintaining the 150-foot thick.
As a vegetated buffer, so.
Exactly. So, and I do have some photos, if I can find them. Oops. Maybe I don't. I guess I don't. I had photos. But it's, you know, there, it's all mature, the, the trees there are all mature, uh, full, you know, full height. So it's going to, that buffer is a pretty good buffer.
I have a question. Um, I don't see anything on these designs, not that I probably would, but, um, what's, do you guys know what the plan is for exterior lighting on this building?
Yeah. Um, we do have a lighting plan. It's, uh, let's see. There we go. So there'll be wall packs along the back. Um, these are LED dark sky compatible. Um, we have a couple of poles in the, the back here. Couple of poles around the perimeter here and a couple more wall packs. And then we do have, um, some, uh, poles going down the driveway. So 20 feet. I believe the poles are, let's see, the wall-mounted ones are 20 feet. Most of the poles are 20 feet and then some of them are 30 feet. The two, I believe the two in the back. So I believe these two are the 30-foot poles.
Okay.
Four. Yeah. The rest are all 20.
Which one will the motion detector lights? I said something in here.
Um, yeah, that one, that's, I think that they're probably going to have them kind of dim after hours. I'll double check with that. That's kind of, a lot of places are going to that now to, to save power. They dim and, and to, you know, to save lighting that if nobody's going to be back there, it's, just maintains a, a security level lighting. So.
Question of security, uh, that's scary. Out of curiosity, um, are they going to be red tinted or are they going to be blue tinted lights?
Uh, these are LED, so they'll probably be the blue. Yeah.
Now, I understand that there is a, um, you're wishing to have a sign for, in place. Can you talk a little bit about that for a second?
So there's, yeah, there's no actual street sign proposed right now. Um, we showed a potential location because if they ever did want to come back and, and do one. But as of right now, there's no, there's no sign proposed, um, no monument. But if we did, they could put it kind of in this area. It'd have to be behind the guardrail. Um, they, they're building signage and that's... There we go. That's kind of the on-building signage.
Is there any other questions in the board that I have to ask?
Is there, is there a reason why it's a certain height?
Yeah, the, the rack storage.
So they're going to have racks all the way up to this?
Yeah. Yeah. So in order to fit in the footprint and be efficient with the storage, it has to be that tall. This is the second site that we've tried to get them a plate, a home for. The first site was, uh, a little close to the airport and exceeded the FAA transitional zone, so.
Okay. Uh, yeah.
And maybe we covered it. I'm not sure, but I thought we did with the last one that was here as well. The number of trees. The number of trees in the parking room, whether it was a percent percentage that had to happen.
Yeah, we have some waiver requests.
Oh, you have a waiver on it?
Well, that actually brings me, well, I was gonna actually gonna say, I'm gonna suggest that we probably look at the waivers. Now, you've spoken, I think you've discussed all of the permits and stuff and you've covered those. So why don't we talk about the waivers and what it is that you're looking to do?
Sure. All right, so. There's some building orientation. There's some waivers from the building orientation and design standards, so requesting it from one twenty thirteen five BHI J and K. Those are all kind of same, same thing I was talking about earlier. Those are really designed for, you know, kind of retail establishments. Where this is a warehouse, it's not visible. You know, that, to spend the money to put in expensive windows in a, in a warehouse, it's. It's a little tough to justify that, so. Again, this is setback seven hundred, over five hundred feet from the front property line. It won't really have any visibility from the Bancroft Highway. It's surrounded by woods on all sides. And, you know, it's, it is a large building, so it'd be tough to get kind of those architectural features that are ideal for, you know, retail plazas. Some of those waivers are relative to residential developments. This isn't residential, so they're not applicable, but we still requested the waiver. Roof forms and materials, because it's, it's not visible from the street. Let's see, what is it, a membrane roofing?
Yes.
Yeah. So requesting to use a membrane. Membrane roofing. Windows, it's required, we're supposed to have twen, sixty percent of the facade. Again, that, that would be appropriate for retail, but for industrial building, it's, it's tough to justify, windows are very expensive, so. Where it's not gonna be visible and it's not a retail commercial plaza, we're requesting a waiver to do more of a, you know, industrial building. Building screening, again, it's, it's set really way far back, so that's on rooftop, can I close my?
Yes.
Yeah. So, you know, because it's set far back and not visible, we're requesting a waiver from screening the rooftop equipment. So requesting a waiver from one twenty fourteen point one, that's a green space. That requires five percent of the total parking area to be internally landscaped.
Do you have a landscaping plan?
Yeah.
Do you wanna talk about it?
Sure. There we go. So they're doing, you know, heavy landscaping along the, kind of the entrance where you come in. We are, you know, lining the entire parking area with trees. We have some internal trees and the internal islands to help with the shading. Back here, we kind of have some screening around the perimeter of the infiltration ponds and then we have some screening here as well. This is that open field and there's, you know, there may be some future development that happens over there. So, you know, we're providing basically, you know, good, good screening everywhere. And then we're, we're using the existing wooded buffers along the Merrimack River. And the, the abutting property here is our kind of the, you know, the perimeter screening.
There's no fences or anything like that?
Nope. So, so the green space waiver, it's for the interior landscaping. Basically, it's real tough to make those internal green space works on, on large parking lots. So we're requesting to reduce that down, kind of push the landscaping up to the perimeter. And again, this is, if it was a retail plaza, you know, and you had, you know, a lot of customers and a lot of the public going here. But this is not open to the public, it's employees only, so, like I said, we push the, the trees around the perimeter. That helps with the heat island effect, you know, provides some shade around the perimeter. And we do have an end cap on each island here, which, you know, helps break up the parking lot a little bit. But I think we're, I think we're a bit shy on the actual percentage, I think. Sorry, and I haven't looked at this in a while. So, yeah, we're, we're technically required to have ten percent, which is, it's a very large amount of interior landscaping. It's tough for an industrial site to meet that. Again, the tree cover. This one's a little tough to, to do the calculation. We really didn't know how to make the exact calculation, but. So we, we may actually meet this one. I'm just not sure how that calculation is done. It's, let me see where it is. I'm not really sure, but basically what, what we did is we just lined the whole perimeter here with trees and we have, you know, a tree here and a tree here. And we're using kind of the existing tree buffer here, so we're kind of just requesting to have this be allowed.
And if, if it were, if it were approved, you'd probably want to put somewhere on the plan or make note of that.
What's that, the, the waiver?
The, yeah, well, the, in terms of the tree cover and, you know, the issue.
Yeah, it's, it's really, so it's, the, the, it reads that you're, you're supposed to have thirty percent cover, shade cover. For parking lots between six and twelve thousand, forty percent between areas of twelve and twenty-four thousand. And fifty percent for parking areas excess of twenty-four thousand square feet. So it's. I'm not sure it's physically possible to make that work.
Well, I think, I think the purpose, I think the purpose of this is just basically to protect or preserve at least. As much of the, the greenery as possible.
Yeah.
The vegetation.
Yeah, and we tried, you know, we provided a ten-foot buffer around, but, you know, separating the parking area. So there is a nice green strip around the whole perimeter here and, you know, we do have some tall trees around here. We have some trees in the interior, so. Yeah, I'm just not sure how that calculation works, so that's why.
Looking at that, I wasn't sure there were trees in the middle strip. It sounds like you are putting them there.
Yeah, there's one right here.
That's just a law we have to abide by. That's all that's my asking.
Yeah. And, you know, kind of following up on, on what the, the possible intent of that, those provisions are. Is, you know, maximizing our, our green image, our green space. Minimizing your heat island effect and trying to kind of diminish the visual impact of a sea of asphalt. And that's kind of the biggest objectives. So if we're thinking and, and looking at applying this provision of the regulations in terms of what the spirit and the intent is. I think that's the primary focus and, you know, and that's why, you know, you submitted the waiver request just to show, look, we're, we're doing what we can to meet the spirit of and intent of the regulation. However, we think we can better achieve, you know, the results with the site, with the landscape plan as proposed. The other thing I would kind of know is that is, as we, if we were to require additional islands or spaces within the parking area for planters and the like, then it's going to cause the parking area to grow. And then the risk there is that we're pushing some of the stormwater or other amenities potentially into our shoreline. Our, that, the shoreline buffer or into the wetland buffer. And I think if we're kind of doing a, a trade-offs. Rather go for the compromise.
Yeah, I think, I think we provide an appropriate amount of landscaping here. Don't want to have too much because it'll, it'll get damaged by the plows and, you know, then you have no, no storage and all that.
Traffic.
Traffic index study, yeah. So the regulations as they're written basically require a full-blown, you know, major traffic impact study. And that's something that's really required for like, you know, a large regional impact type development. Where this does have relatively low traffic volumes, where, you know, we did do a traffic study, but we're, we're not providing every single piece that the ordinance is requesting, so. You know, Jen had some questions. I, we kind of went back and forth and I think I clarified some of those about the tractor trailers. So, you know, the, the question was, are twenty tractor trailers all showing up in the peak hour? That would be a nightmare.
Yes, it would.
No, the, the answer is no, you know, they, they show up when they get there. And like I said, it's sporadically throughout the day, so, you know, maybe an hour, maybe one per hour, two per hour, something like that. So it'll be, you know, spread out. And the other part of that was the, we already talked about the widening, so originally we had a twenty-four foot wide, but we went to thirty. And that, that relieves those turning radiac issues. And then the stormwater, so. The, yeah, the waiver is only for the subcatchment along the road, along the driveway, so. Basically what it is is. So right now, there's an existing, just, you know, like a ten-foot wide dirt road. That all just sheets down through the existing woods and hits Colby Brook. When we add pavement here, obviously, we're gonna increase that slightly. You know, the option is to collect it all and treat it into, you know, infiltration type systems. But a preferred method is just to use the existing vegetated buffer to do the treatment itself. And that's actually a, a better system because instead of using a, you know, say a small, a single infiltration pond or something. What happens is this whole area acts as a treatment system. So you're getting, you know, a raindrop hits, say, this side of the road. It'll sheet right across the road and then it'll sheet down through this existing fifty-foot buffer. And you're getting a very small spread-out flow, so, you know, there's a really small amount of salt or sand in that area. So it really doesn't overburden your existing vegetation. So that's, that's actually a better treatment system, but what happens there is there's a slight increase in peak flow. Because, you know, this increased impervious surface is more than the dirt would, you know, than the gravel would, would discharge. So you have a slight increase in flow to Colby Brook. And there's really, the only way that we'd be able to address that, like I said, is, is collecting it with curbing and then doing like a detention pond. But I think that would be a much worse situation than just using the existing vegetated buffer and having a slight increase. At the river itself, because we're infiltrating everything from the site, the actual flow at Merrimack River is reduced. It's just this tiny bit of flow that, that hits Colby Brook. So we're just basically requesting a waiver to allow us to slightly increase the flow to Colby Brook so that we can maintain this wooded buffer instead of disturbing it to, you know, install detention ponds or something along that, along that strip. Fishing game did prefer to keep, you know, as much of this natural as possible, so for us to try to put in a detention pond or something, the critters would be adversely impacted. So we hope that, hope that you guys agree with that, if you have any questions.
Thank you. Jen, did you have any, I mean, I know we jumped to stormwater, but in terms of the traffic study stuff, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
I've asked, I've asked plenty of questions at this point.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. No, on the traffic, no, that's, that's fine. I feel like it's the only thing we've been like communicating about over the last two days. So, yeah, I mean, I think Brian's done a good job of explaining the changes that they've implemented to address the traffic concerns. You know, my initial read, I had mistaken what was presented as there, there were gonna be twenty tractor trailers leaving to conduct deliveries between seven and eight AM, to which, you know, alarm bells went off and that is not the case. So it's, you know, as Brian's already, already mentioned, a lot of my questions. Are kind of resolved at this point in that those truck, those delivery trucks are gonna be coming in spread throughout the day over a larger period, period of time. The turn, the, the turns have been improved so that we don't have to worry about the crossing into oncoming traffic. I was particularly concerned about the trucks that would have been traveling south down Charles Bancroft and making that right-hand turn in. They were gonna have to cross into the oncoming lane of traffic and that definitely was, was somewhat disconcerting. That's been resolved with the widening of the driveway, so they can now make that turn safely. And so, like I said, that's, that's been resolved. The, you know, understanding the peak flow, the, Brian, I don't know that you've mentioned, one of the other clarifications was that. So you've got your employees that are coming in first thing in the morning and that was about approximately twenty?
Yeah.
I guess there were a lot of twenties.
About twenty drivers and five warehouse workers get to the site between five AM and six AM. And then the twenty drivers leave the site between seven and eight AM with the, the delivery trucks to go make their, all their deliveries.
The smaller delivery trucks, not the tractor trailers. And that was where, that was where I, 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 yes.
Yep.
I, I read delivery trucks and presumed those were the tractor trailers. And so the clarification is, is those, those, those vehicles that are leaving between seven, eight to eight AM are a much smaller vehicle.
Yeah, pickup trucks, little box trucks, that sort of, those sort of trucks.
Making local.
Yep.
Local deliveries. So, so, yeah, so that, that concern was mitigated. I had less concern about the afternoon because there was a larger window of time that the, the trucks were all returning back to the site. So I had less concern there. Like I said, overall, I didn't have any concerns about the number of vehicles. It was the type and size of vehicles. And with the change to the driveway configuration, those, those concern and, and understanding of, of which vehicles are coming and going one. Those concerns have been mitigated at this point. But I wanted you all to have the full kind of chain of, of discussion. So you do have, you do have the full access to the full conversation that Brian and I had going back and forth over the, over the last two days posted to the Google site in regards to this.
And there was actually one waiver that I think we need to add. I'm not sure if we need to add it or not, but.
The driveway width.
The driveway width, so.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that, it says, um, the maximum width of fifty feet. And then it says, the minimum width of a driveway approach for two-way driveway shall not be less than thirty feet.
For commercial development.
Of a driveway approach, so I'm not sure if that.
I think you're okay now then.
I think we are, because I think the approach is the first, yeah, so I'm not sure we need that, but if we do, we can request it.
So it's thirty up until the bend. And so as you get to the bend and narrows back to twenty-four.
Be thirty is what they're saying?
Well, I think it's, it's, we should reread that piece in the regulations. Is this a driveway approach?
It says driveway approach width for commercial industrials. So it says, the maximum width of a driveway approach for a two-way driveway shall not exceed fifty feet. The minimum width of the driveway approach for two-way driveway shall not be less than thirty feet. So I think that just refers to the apron, you know, this area here where, where we do meet thirty. It does neck, you know, it flares down and then it, it meets twenty-four down in this area here, so. I think we're okay, but if the board thinks that we need a waiver, we're happy to request it.
I do have one question. I think, I think it's okay before we move on to my question, but if anybody else has a. I'm gonna go back to something that came up in a previous plan, but I just want to be safe. On one twenty, I think it's one point five on the site regs. What it's saying is all season safe site distance. What is the length of that property on, on the highway? Like a hundred and fifty feet or something?
The length of which property?
For yours, for that neck where you're gonna knock the Charles.
Oh, oh, our property, okay. Yeah. I think we have two hundred.
Okay. What it's saying here is safety for the driver between two points.
Yep.
They, for three feet, nine inches high, they can be able to see.
Right.
Ten feet back from the road, which you're talking about trimming that area, right?
Yep.
Which is fine. What's the miles? Right? Which is fine. What's the miles? It's saying, is that a 40 mile an hour road? Or is it 30 there?
40.
40.
At 40 miles an hour, and I'm going to say it doesn't have a big grade on that road. It's not 3% or 9%, right? It says it, you have to have a minimum view.
Yep.
I believe, between 315 feet and 289 feet.
Yeah.
So, right. So, as long as you have that.
We do.
Because if you don't, you can just have a truck's entering sign to warn people. But I just want to make sure you.
Yeah, so if you look at the screen, so, we're kind of at the driveway location.
So, that looks.
And you can see.
More than 300 feet?
You take quite a ways back. And, and, you know, this is in the middle of the lane, so, you know, you're, you'll be sitting, you know, 10 feet back. But you can see that this is all like a, it's kind of a ditch here. So, there's no obstructions looking that way.
Brian, do you have the traffic study on your laptop?
But it's saying 10 feet back.
Because I had some photographs with distances.
Um, potentially. I think I have.
I know he's going to trim that, but there's a, there seems to be a guardrail there. I'm not sure if that is or if it's a fallen tree.
Yeah, so this, you know, this will be, the guardrail will, will actually cut back in here.
Well, it can stay, as long as they have 10 feet of.
Yeah.
3.5. Yeah, it looks, it looks.
Yeah, we have about.
I was wondering about that.
We have about 600 feet looking right.
How much?
About 600, looking this way.
If not, you just have to put a sign out. But I just want to make sure.
Yep.
Especially in the winter. Because we have a lot of tailgaters on 3A. And they'll have their blinker on to turn, but you know.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
So, as long as people can see.
Yeah, site distance is fine there. There's plenty of site distance.
They have those 70-foot trucks pulling out. People are going to have to see them pulling out.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I see. It helps that the road actually curves that way, because you can actually see, you know, from right here, you can actually see down that road a little further by shifting it that way. So.
I'm just saying, the initial reaction of the town, you know, they'll, they won't see a sign out front. They'll just see a road, and they'll see these big trucks going down.
Yeah, right.
Right.
Until, until we're, you know.
Yeah, and I know people do fly down that road. So.
Just a quick question about the, I noticed that, because the, over the districts, it's, this is an aquifer protection zone. Is that my understanding? Or are there any impacts to that? Or will there be any impacts to, I guess the question is, will there be any impacts to that? Just wanted to address that.
Um, no, this isn't, uh, let's see.
You're definitely in it. Turn off the aerial.
There you go. So, yeah, that's a, what, high?
It'll be in.
High or medium? High, right? Yeah. Um, no, there's, um, there's no hazardous materials or anything like that. So.
You're below the impervious surface limit. You're below the impervious surface limit.
Oh, for the shoreline?
No, for the aquifer protection district.
Oh, right. So, yeah, I don't, I don't expect any adverse impacts.
Does the board have any other questions? Okay, if not, I'm going to open this up to public hearing. Members of the public here that wish to ask questions of the applicant or wish to speak. Please step forward and tell us your name, your address.
Do we need the microphone for cable access?
Yeah, you have to step up to the microphone. I'm sorry. So, have a seat at the table.
Hi, my name is Bill Luquette. Live at 494 Charles Bancroft Highway. So, one of the abutting properties here. Questions or concerns I have is with the traffic. I guess I know you guys say that it's a drop in the bucket, but 20 trucks a day does seem like quite a bit. I mean, I assume they're not staying overnight, so they're leaving too, right? So, that'd be coming and going.
Correct.
Right.
You're over here somewhere, right?
Uh, yeah, the one, there's a little access road to beat the house to the south of that, that one, right there. Yep. And I know that corner looks kind of gradual on there, but actually, when you're going, it is, it's kind of a blind corner. So, worry about trucks turning in and causing traffic in that area. And then, I think at the zoning board meeting, it said the 40 box trucks today, too. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's about 20 tractor trailers a day, and then the smaller trucks will leave, you know, to make their deliveries in the morning.
Right. I guess the traffic studies have been done, but they're just, by, in person just seemed concerned about that kind of traffic going by. And even though it's sporadic, it's still probably going to happen within business hours or so. So, you're talking a period of eight hours, you know, where you might see 20 trucks. Then, of course, I know the current tenants or whoever, they've said that it's going to be sporadic, but what if this changes hands and becomes a different kind of warehouse that has a more increased volume schedule and whatnot? Just. Yeah. Just concerns over it, that's all I have.
Well, we definitely appreciate you letting us know and bringing it to the attention of the applicant and to the board. Does the board have any questions for the?
Yeah, I understand your concern, because I'm off of a secondary road of this, Albuquerque.
Yeah.
And I approve the drive-through, not, because it's 30 miles an hour supposedly. And they're downshifting at 30 miles an hour. I get it. So, I understand your concern on that, for sure. I mean, trucks have highly regulated the drivers, right?
Yeah.
They have computers in there.
Right.
They have so much sleep, you know, they, they have to.
Well, even, I guess it's not.
They have tickets, they can lose their license. I, I understand your concern on that, though. That's, over time, it's probably going to be more gradual, just as the building develops of that area, more traffic increase, especially with the airport.
Especially since most of them, I would think, would be coming from the north there from 293. So, they'd be coming down there. I guess it'd be pretty early there for their air brakes or whatnot. And it just, just a concern. That's, that's all.
Well, we appreciate it, and thank you very much for coming and allowing us to hear your concern, and we'll definitely take it into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak this evening? Hearing, none, I guess. I will close public input at this time. Yes, Jen?
Where, they haven't been to the zoning board yet, just in the event that there are any changes that might change the design or substance of the application, do you want to actually leave public comment and the hearing open so that you can return to that at a subsequent meeting?
Yeah. What I will do, I will, I'm going to reopen public hearing, I mean, public hearing at this time. In terms of you getting, obviously, a zoning variance and going for that.
Special exception.
Special exception.
Special exception, excuse me. And allowing the opportunity for the public to comment as to those issues as they relate to that. So, I will leave it open.
Sounds good.
Good point. Thank you, Jen.
Then we don't have to renotice.
Perfect.
Keep it, yeah.
Um, does the board have any other questions? What I would like to do, we thank you very much for coming this evening and sharing this with us. And we have definitely asked a lot, you a lot of questions. Certainly, you know, there's a lot of, lot of stuff that goes along with this. What I'd like to do is table this discussion. Obviously, you have a special exception permit that has to be allowed by the zoning board. And there are certain permits that I believe you need from a conditional use permit, I believe you said. Or did you get that already?
Just the special exception.
Just the special exception.
Yep.
So, in terms of that, I think what we're going to do tonight is we're going to, we're going to stop here. Okay? We're going to sort of digest everything that we've kind of, sync it in and, and, you know, get, get an idea. And we're going to have you come back at a date and time certain.
Yep.
And at that time, we will, we will go forward once we know the, the status of the, the zoning board's decision, if that's applicable.
Sounds good.
So, if that's okay with the members of the board, I think that's what we will do. When is our, when do you think, well, obviously, when is your, what's the date for the?
Uh, it's next Wednesday, the 14th.
It's next Wednesday. Okay.
So, 20th.
So, we were talking about the 20th.
So, the 20th, he can come back. And what I would do, and I think in the meantime, is, we discussed a lot of stuff here. Perhaps, you know, looking at the plans and seeing if we can put notes on the plans for different issues, like the waivers that we discussed, what are the, you know, whether there's regional impact, those types of questions that we kind of asked you, and kind of, you know, shore it up a little bit and clean it up a little bit and see, so that when you come back to us, you'll have it, you know, in a completed form. And what we can do is just basically go through, if, if it does come before us again, and essentially make a decision, make a decision at that time regarding this information.
Sure.
I think, you know, a landscaping design plan, I think, is very important. I, I would, you know, probably maybe attach that to the plan or something.
It's on the side.
And, you know, those types of things. You, you, you're the professional, you know.
Yeah.
Essentially, you know, but we, as a board, I think it's important to have those things on there, the notes and stuff that.
Sure.
Address some of these issues. So.
Yeah, we have.
We talked about.
Yeah, so we have a, a note on here about the alteration of terrain, about that inspection and maintenance manual. That's right on the cover sheet there.
Okay.
Uh, the waivers, we do have listed on the cover. Sprinkler, we did talk about adding some notes from the fire department.
So, that's something we can probably add.
Yeah, we can add that. Hydrants, I'll make sure that the hydrants are.
They find the hydrant on the, one of the plans.
Okay.
And now I flip pages, so I don't know which sheet it was on.
Yeah.
But there is an existing hydrant location noted on one of the sheets, just north of the Small Tubes driveway.
Okay. Yeah, I think they're going to want a hydrant near the building, too, as well. So, I'll make sure that that's on, that we add that if that's not there.
Okay.
Usually, they want it, you know, close to the fire department connection. So, you know, we'll probably have a hydrant in this island or in this, you know, in this area somewhere. So, I'll make sure that that's there. I'll check into the lighting to see if they, if they have some dimming.
Put something there about.
Yeah.
And I think, I think that was about it. I'll work with Lou to get his comments addressed.
I want to go back to traffic for a minute. Is there a way to do any kind of comparative analysis to, like, it was like the Micho distribution, the potato chip people, and like a True Green, all in that other little corner across there. Do we have any comparative analysis about how many trucks that leave and come to those facilities?
That's a very good question.
Compared to how much more it would be? Was it equal, or?
That's a very good question.
They would have, I would assume they would have a tractor try to come at some point and restock them. I don't know what their frequency is, if we could find that out.
Are you talking about the fastest building?
It's the blue, where they, they sell the potato chips. They have the trucks go out every day.
Near Romano's.
Romano's is right next to, yeah. But the True Green isn't right next to that, too. I mean, True Green's got trucks going in and out, dude. So, what's the difference in traffic compared to this and that? If there's a way to figure that out.
They've been there for quite some time. Different businesses have been in there, so I don't know if there is a study.
Sorry to.
I mean, that kind of gets at the traffic, the traffic, the traffic study side of things, where you would actually have, what you do is you have someone sit out there and do turning movement counts. And so, you would kind of flag different locations. And when you do a turning movement count, you're not only looking at the number of vehicles, which, you know, where they're coming from, where they're turning, but you also are cataloging the type of vehicle as well.
Yeah, they do, they do differentiate between larger trucks and regular ones.
Am I allowed to bring up another property next to it that has something ongoing potentially with pedestrians crossing the road? We're trying to try to diffuse that. Last meeting, we had a company. I'm just saying, with more 18-wheelers coming down that road, not too far away.
It's coming from the north.
Yeah.
Yeah. They're coming from the north and in and back out, so it shouldn't impact any existing development.
Because there's no highways.
Bring the traffic stuff into it.
Right, it shouldn't impact development to the south.
Safety, you know, and then address it. If it's not safe, then how do we address it? That's all.
Yep.
Make it safe. That's what I'm saying.
Now, looking at that overhead and thinking about regional impact, go back to, when they get up into Manchester, those houses are right on the road. I wonder if that would be considered regional impact?
I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a DOT route, you know, it's designed for trucking and everything. The amount of trucks that we're adding to it is so minimal in the overall grand scheme. I'm sorry?
Well, the type of trucking that you're adding to it is a little bit different.
Right, but.
It is a different type of truck.
They do get a lot of continental.
I was thinking about the continental trucks.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, these are just your standard tractor trailers. You know, they, they are the large ones, but that's, that's pretty much what everybody uses now. So.
I would recommend, on your regional impact thing, though, you should take a vote tonight, because if you did vote that, yes, it does have regional impact, you need to notify your surrounding communities.
I, I entertain a motion that this project has regional impact.
That it does?
I'm sorry.
Does or does not?
Does.
Does or does not, yeah.
Well, I guess the discussion is, I guess this is the board, I should ask the board.
Are you making a motion or are you asking the question?
I'm asking a question first. Do we feel that this has regional impact?
So, it's not like a big FedEx or something like that, so.
With the continental trucks already going through, I don't believe that it does.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think so.
All right. Well, then, I would entertain a motion that this project would not have regional impact.
I make, uh, some moves.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion. All those signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstained? Motion passes 5-0-0. Okay. Okay. So, I guess the next meeting, our, the next date for this is March 20th. Here is 7:00 p.m. at Town Hall. Obviously, you will bring whatever materials you need to bring with you, and then we will basically go from there. And I can't really, I mean, obviously, you have to go before the zoning board, so I'm not going to, you know.
Right.
Say that right now, but obviously, take care of that. And if things go well, then we'll come back and we can continue.
So, I did not plan to bring the architect back. I think all the architectural questions were answered, right?
I, I think, yeah, I think that's, that's perfectly fine.
Great.
That the board feels that it's perfectly fine. So, I think you should be all set.
Okay. Excellent. Yeah, and I'll work with, you know, Lou to get all his comments addressed. Jen, I'll work with Jen and Joan to get their comments addressed. And DES, we did receive comments from Shoreland. They were really minor. By then, by the next meeting, we should have comments from AOT. And hopefully, Wetlands' permit may be granted by then and may, may not be, but, great.
All right, we'll see. And obviously, public input is open, so the public has nothing to comment on this. So, continue to comment on it, so.
Great.
With that, and if there's no other questions, I'm going to close this, this hearing.
Oh, you're not.
What?
You're going to, you're going to, you're going to solicit a mo- motion to continue to a date and time certain.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Yeah, no.
Technicalities.
I know, I know. All right. I need a motion to, I need to have a motion entertained for a date and time certain to continue this hearing on March 20th, 2018, on the condition that a zoning variance.
Special exception.
Special exception.
Special exception has been allowed for this project.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Abstained? Motion passes 5-0-0. Sorry about that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming, and thank everybody else for coming. And good luck.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Can you shoot me a PDF of the plans, we have to draft the easements?
Yep.
Absolutely.
Just, yeah, just a letter that says.
When you add an access highway right up the street, shit like that's going to want to start coming in.
That's, yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
That's fine. Complying with state statute. We're supposed to check.
Welcome to the next meeting, you mean, for the public to get back to the record?
Right, you won't be notified again, but you can.
Right.
Yeah.
There's no other notice requirement, but you can do that. I mean, it's. You would submit.
Mail it or.
Yeah, you can mail it to, to the planning board administrator and.
Can I get your name for the record? Can I even get your?
Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Thank you.
Take care. Well, my computer, for some reason, is restarting, and it's at ninety percent, so I don't know where we are. I'm sorry.
Nothing like paper.
Classic Windows. I'm going to have to talk.
So, on, here, 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 here. You can at least have an agenda. Oh, wait, it's just committee reports.
Exactly.
Well, I was about to say it, but since you brought it up.
If you want to do other business, I can vamp for you for a second.
Okay, well, why don't we go to other business so that Jen can fill us in?
We, Kim and I, yesterday, drafted a press release that hopefully is all set, that we sent over to you yesterday.
Oh, no.
I'll call him first in the morning, just to squeak it in.
Okay. So, we drafted a press release for the demolition review ordinance and heritage commission piece, and so those, so that is posted to the Google site, and good to go, otherwise.
Yes, town meeting is March 13.
Correct.
Voting. We have a couple of.
Correct. Seven to seven.
Articles.
Do you think this will be a problem getting it in?
I'll send it tonight and see what happens.
Yeah, because this is the best way we can get the voters informed.
Okay. And, oh, I do have something else. On the twentieth, I will not be here. Jay Mancara will be covering for me.
Okay.
See, you got the big boss covering to fill in. And, yeah, so he'll be here on the twentieth. My, because I'll talk about my son, Ploney. He's a senior, it's his last year, so he's got only so many, you know, high school events left for parents to go be spectators, and that is one of them. So, I've arranged some coverage there, so you'll be in good hands on the twentieth. I will make sure he is updated on the application that we just heard tonight and that he is set to go on. You have another application that will also be on the agenda on the twentieth. We will get those materials posted to the Google site ASAP, so you can start looking through things.
And I might add that Jay Mancara, many moons ago, was our planner.
Correct. So, it'll be like a coming home.
Before he was a lawyer.
And, yeah, so that would be when he was kind of first starting out in his professional career earlier, and, yeah, so it'll, it'll be like full circle for Jay. And then, Michael has set up a meeting with the Recreation Commission.
Thank you. Yeah, I got in touch with John Bryant of the Rec Commission. They are happy to meet with us on the 27th of March here in Town Hall, I believe, at 7:00 o'clock, to talk about the conceptual design chapter that we went over last time, the vision statement for Dara Pond. And also, I got in touch with Troy Brown. I sent him a letter, Dennis, to be appointed as a full member. He is going to be presenting that to the Board of Selectmen at their next meeting for approval, so that's good to go.
And we have Kate Stevens, who has
Yes, we do.
applied and has sat through this wonderful meeting tonight.
Okay, well, you know.
Thanks, you're.
Why don't you come up to the table?
Can you give that to Mike? Thanks.
That would be helpful. Yeah, good, thank you. Well, you definitely got a taste of what it's like to be on the planning board tonight.
That's fun.
Yeah. So, I hope you learned a lot from that. But that is basically, you know, site plan applications, that's what normally takes place. That's basically the, you know, the regulations, and that's what we go by, and that's the whole process in a nutshell. We have your application for appointment. I guess, you know, is this something that you would be interested in, I guess, is my question?
Yeah, just town involvement in general, and I just thought this was at least, at the very least, a good place to start.
Absolutely.
You know, end up staying or however, but, yeah, I just felt like we've definitely put roots down here that I wasn't necessarily expecting to keep, and so I figured, might as well, better late than never, get started to really actually get involved.
It is a commitment, obviously, and you don't have to make every meeting, but we'd like you here most of the time, if you were to come aboard. And I know our schedules are crazy busy, we have other lives, I get it. It's, it's always something to juggle. Just want to make sure you're comfortable being able to do that, and we, you know, we'd love to have your board, if you're interested, we are looking for members, and certainly, you know, this is a great opportunity, a great place to start, getting involved. Does the other members of the board have any questions for this applicant?
I did put in as an alternate to kind of, you know, get my feet right, like.
Sure, absolutely.
The only limiting factor is always childcare, like with anything else in life.
Right, and that's why I mentioned the commitment piece.
But, you know, as far as I can tell, you know, I'll do my best to get here, you know, every time.
Okay.
I put in as an alternate under the same idea.
Well, the thing is, too, we have, I mean, we're going to have Dennis as a full-time member, and we have another opening as well for a planning board member to come on board, because we have actually two, David Samuel and obviously, Tom Young's position. So, again, as I said, I think it's a great experience if you are interested in having a board, and we'd love to have you, and I think you'd definitely be a good fit. Well, what we have to do is basically, if nobody has any questions, you know, I would entertain a motion to recommend that Kate Stevens be, name be submitted to the Board of Selectmen for appointment.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Stained, motion passes five zero zero. Well, so the next step is you're going to have to meet with the Board of Selectmen at some point. They'll put you on there on a calendar, and it's just like this, tonight, you know, they're probably going to ask you questions, you know, what's your interest in the planning board, things like that. And, you know, just, you know, be yourself, that's all. And we look forward, hopefully, to see you again.
Yeah.
And you are welcome to come to any of the meetings in the interim, if there are any, and certainly, you know, get an idea, you know, get some experience and see what things done, yes.
So, I'd say, what was the date that the Selectmen will be acting on Dennis's?
I believe it's March 12th, but don't.
Yes, next, they didn't meet this Monday, so it would be next Monday.
Next Monday, yeah.
So, if we got something to Troy sooner than later?
Troy tomorrow.
So then, yeah.
Get it on the agenda, hopefully. We'll let you know if you can get it on that agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, we can do that.
So, yeah, so if the Selectmen make their appointment on the 12th, then the 20th, you'd be free to sit at the table.
You have to get sworn in.
Right, 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 yes, yeah.
Is that in a separate?
Yeah, you interview by the Selectmen, and then they do the paperwork, and then you have to come in and be sworn in by the town clerk.
Oh, okay.
During the day.
Just whenever they're open?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so if you're sworn in by the town clerk by the 20th, then you can grab a chair at the table. What I would say is, you know, you'll be coming in as an alternate, which is kind of a good practice. I knew you were in the audience for the application that was heard tonight that will be continued on the 20th. I would just say for that one, you know, if Michael says, would you like to be a voting member, say, not for this application, but sure on the next application. You know, because, because you want to, good practice for a board is you want to try and have some continuity as to who the voting members are. So, if an application is continued to multiple nights, you want to try and have the same panel of people that are there, hearing the information and reviewing it and making that decision. And just so, you know, and it just creates some predictability for the applicant and kind of allows you some consistency. But, you know, there's a second application that will be heard that night, and so if Mike says, hey, you want to be a voting member tonight because we have an open seat, feel free. If you feel comfortable, say, sure, why not? All right, then you can vote.
Okay.
See?
Sounds good.
All right.
All right, well, thank you very much for coming in, and we look forward to.
Sit for the rest?
Sure.
Just a note, on the 27th, I have, I have two Tuesdays in a row that are kid conflicts, so the evening that you're meeting with the Recreation Commission, I will be at a jazz concert. However, Cassie Mullin from my office, who has been helping behind the scenes on some of the master plan work, she will, so that we have someone there to take some notes and come back with some edits to be made, Cassie will attend, is planning to attend with you.
She was here before, right?
Yes, she's been here before. Yep. Yep.
Well, we, you know, you'll be greatly missed, but certainly, we'll do, we'll do fine.
You'll be in good hands. Cassie's very familiar with everything you've done thus far on the community design chapter, because she's actually the one who's been doing the writing behind the scenes.
There you go.
I take her back a lot of notes, and some of them are really horribly scribbled, and she manages to decipher them and put something together that's coherent, so she knows what's going on.
Very good.
So.
Good. Alrighty. Committee reports. Any reports from any committees? Nothing from NRPC?
Our meeting's coming up the next week.
Quarterly commission meeting's coming up.
Quarterly commission meeting is coming up, I'm planning and attending that. When is the date of it?
That would be
On my phone.
The 21st. I will be at that.
Good. The Conservation Commission meeting is scheduled for March 28th.
Correct.
It's a Wednesday, it's 7:00 PM in Town Hall. Laura Merrimack, I believe, is next meeting. I do not have on me tonight, so I'm not sure when they're meeting again, but probably, it's usually the fourth, fourth Thursday of the month at the actual public library, but that has to be posted, so I'm not sure. Okay. Approval of the February 20th, 2000?
Not ready.
Not ready, okay, well, we won't be ready for those. Do we have anything else?
I only have some things we decide afterwards.
Okay. All right. Anything else, Jen? Nothing? Okay. All right, can we, well, again, going back to approval for the February 20th, 2018 minutes? Have we, anybody had an opportunity to take?
No, they're not finished.
Yeah, they're, yeah.
Oh. Okay. While they're on here, just so that I can say the approval, okay. Never mind. So, we will defer those. Defer those, and we'll do that next time. Anything else from the board? If not, it's a little past nine, too badly, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Does the chairman want to make a motion to adjourn?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Stained, motion passes five zero zero. Thank you all for watching tonight, and please get out and vote on March 20th.